I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming this evening. Go ahead and call the roll, please.
Trustee Spurling.
Here.
Trustee Lee.
Here.
Trustee Heinz.
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
Trustee Marasek.
Here.
Trustee Button.
Here.
And we're all here this evening. Item four, public participation. If there's any member of the public that wishes to address the board on any issue, they may do so at this time. If there are none, we'll go ahead and move on to the consent agenda this evening. Trustee Lee has asked that we pull item E off the consent and move that on to items for separate action. That will be item I. I'll read these and entertain a motion for approval. Minutes of the village board meeting of September 8th, minutes of the executive session of September 8th, accounts payable through September 17th, accounts receivable report for August of 2014, and I'll entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Heinz.
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
Trustee Marasek.
Yes.
Trustee Button.
Yes.
And that carries 6-0. Thank you. Under items for separate action this evening, item A, you want to take item A and B together? If that's okay. Item A, which is the recommendation of the Plant Commission on PZ 2014, PC 2014-007Z, which is a residential lot coverage text amendment, and then the ordinance 1629 follows. And with that, I'll turn over Director Young for his summary.
Thank you very much. The Plant Commission last week voted on a recommendation to the village board regarding a text amendment for lot coverage. You may recall that we discussed this with the board a few months ago with the idea that we would look comprehensively at all residential zoning districts in terms of overall lot coverage. We've come to find out that the lot coverage is woefully insufficient for residents to utilize their backyards in a reasonable fashion. We looked carefully at the overall amount of drainage in all of the different subdivisions, and we've come up with a unique kind of crafting of the text amendment where we would, through the various districts as it's outlined, increase the amount of lot coverage that would be utilized by a resident, and then do a two-tiered approach. The first level would be for the maximum size house and driveway that could be incorporated in any district, and then look at accessory structures such as decks and pools and sheds, and give some actual credit for pools because they hold water in a storm event, and then also give some credit for decks that have an impervious surface below the slats of the deck. So with that, the Plant Commission took two meetings, looked at this very carefully, analyzed it with our village engineer, and felt that there was a recommendation to be made for text amendment. The other reason that we wanted to take a look at this was we realized that some of the PUDs that had been approved in the past did not really match up with the standing lot coverage code in the base zoning ordinance. So we took that into consideration, and basically what it means as you go up in the zoning districts to the smaller lots, there's more of a usable area for individual homeowners to take advantage of. The other note to this is that upon review by the community development staff and the village engineer, it's determined that increased lot coverage with a, say, a patio or some other type of structure is incorporated and could cause a drainage problem within a neighborhood, then we would have the right under this amendment to deny increased lot coverage. So with that, we do have the ordinance on the agenda tonight, but the anticipation was that we would approve it in two weeks, or ask for your approval in two weeks.
Is there any questions of staff on either the recommendation or the ordinance? We won't be voting on...
How do our percentages that we are proposing, how do they look when compared to surrounding villages? Have we looked at that at all?
Yes, we have. It's very similar to what has been done in Sugar Grove and, to some extent, what's been done in Yorkville. Our percentages were very low to begin with in the base zoning ordinance, so we made the adjustments for all of the districts, and that's on page two and three of the report. And you can see by various zoning districts how it basically increases lot coverage by 5% as you move up in the different districts. So I would say with the amendment, it is similar to other surrounding communities.
Has there been any consideration given to the potential use of permeable pavers?
I might ask Pete to address that, but I believe that permeable pavers would be looked at potentially as given a credit. Now, that has not specifically been incorporated into the amendment. The two areas that we looked at were decks, like I mentioned, with impervious surface, or pervious surface underneath the deck, and then pools, but I guess we could take a look at permeable pavers as well.
The only reason I ask is because of the field that I'm in. I know it's an option, and people are starting to use that. We've actually, on some of the projects that we've done, the big projects with the infill that goes in between in these pervious areas, we actually sprayed in with a fire hose, and we have no runoff at all from a two-inch fire hose. So I consider it, but other than that, everything looks fine to me.
What kind of impact, if any, do you think this would have on development of either vacant parcels that are looking for new home builders or new developments? Do you think this will have any impact?
I don't think it'll have any impact on the building community coming in and filling out some of the lots in the subdivisions that have stalled out, but I think where its real impact is later on with the homeowner and what they can do reasonable lot coverage in terms of their backyard. That's where the pressure comes in. It's not so much the home builders coming in and asking for approval of a set of plans. They're going to pretty much follow the first layer of lot coverage, if you will. It's the secondary aspect of it that is the ultimate end user.
Okay. Are there any other questions?
If there were to be a detached garage, would it fall under the first layer or the second?
First, first layer.
Okay.
Okay. Well, the ordinance, we will approve in two weeks. We'll approve the recommendation tonight, right?
Very good. Yes, thank you.
If there's a motion to approve item A, which is the recommendation of Plant Commission?
Second.
Moved in second. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
Trustee Marasek.
Yes.
Trustee Button.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Heinz.
Yay.
And that carries 6-0. And you'll see item B on the next village board agenda. Moving on to item C, which is the recommendation of Plant Commission on PC 2014-008, which is a special use for a gas station, convenience store, and outdoor sales accessory to a principal use for Speedway at 2110 Orchard Road. And then D also is the ordinance 1630 approving such. With that, I'll turn it over to Rich for a summary of this.
Thank you very much. This is also an item that was reviewed by the Plant Commission and recommended for approval of a gas station with a convenience store and outdoor sales. There were a number of discussion points with the Plant Commission primarily related to access to the property. It's somewhat of an unusual piece because it's triangular in nature, and there's some access challenges on both Caterpillar Drive and then Orchard Road. What I'd like to do tonight is have Rich Yost from Speedway go through a brief presentation of their proposed site plan, and then we have some adjacent property owners representing the Shearing family tonight that would also like to make a few comments after the Speedway presentation. Secondary item will be later on in the agenda with the sign variance, and we can talk about that separately if you'd like. Again, this item has been presented on the board's agenda with an ordinance, but we would ask that that item be reviewed and acted on in two weeks. So with that, I turn it over to Rich Yost from Speedway.
You just want to cover the ZBA case and the variance at the same time? It's part of the same discussion? Do you guys want to do that separately?
That's fine. I can briefly update you on the sign case if you'd like.
So just for the record, this is ENF, which is the recommendation of the ZBA 2014-009 sign variance for Speedway, and item F, which is ordinance 1631, which is the variance, and it's the first reading of both of these, so we'll approve those at our next meeting.
Correct. With regards to the sign, there's two requested variances, one for a ground sign or ground signs. There'll be multiple ground signs because of the frontage on three streets for this operation. The village code allows for an eight-foot wide by six-foot high ground sign on each individual frontage of a road. What Speedway has proposed, and it's in your packet, and I left you a colored illustration at your station tonight, that it's a very small little drawing, I believe, on the bottom left-hand corner of the monument sign that they would like to incorporate. The strict interpretation of the sign code would require an eight-foot wide by six-foot tall, 48-square-foot sign. Speedway intends to comply with the six-foot overall height limitation, but would like to request a sign that is 10.2 feet wide. So there's a variance from a 48-square-foot sign to a 61-square-foot sign. The Plant Commission took a look at this, recognized that there are other signs in the area, specifically the Aldi and Walgreens signage on Orchard as well, and felt that this would not be out of character with the overall area, so the recommendation was to approve the request for this size ground sign. The second component to the variance is that of canopy signage. If you, again, look at that illustration, you see what is identified as the left elevation to the far right. There's a Speedway sign on the top of the canopy, and then when you look at the last illustration just off-center to the left, it says the right elevation, same type of sign. It's basically the butt end of the canopy. This is, represents a 45-square-foot sign. This sign code would allow a 30-square-foot sign. The Plant Commission also recommended approval of this, and one of their reasons was that overall, when you look at the combination of signage and the amount of canopy and the elevation of the building itself on all four sides, there's very limited signage. There's technically no wall signage on the building structure itself. So the Plant Commission felt that it was reasonable to grant this variance for a limited amount of signage that is on the plan and incorporate this as a part of their recommendation.
Okay.
So with that, I'll turn it over to Rich Yost from Speedway. He can walk you through the plan profile.
Sure. Good evening. As Rich said, my name's Rich Yost. I'm a division project manager with Speedway, based out of Tinley Park, Illinois. Our address is 8200 West 185th Street in Tinley Park. Tonight, I'm joined by Robert Madco from our consulting firm, CISO, who's helping us along with the engineering of this project, along with Alcheconis. He's our internal real estate representative, and Melanie Foose, our construction specialist. We're here to answer any questions that you might have about the project, and I'd like to give a brief presentation on the overview of our project on Orchard and Caterpillar Drive. What we're proposing is a 4,600-square-foot retail fuel and convenience store. The overall site is about 3.4 acres. This will be a state-of-the-art convenience store, the fourth or fifth concept that we're introducing in the Chicago market. We want to be high-volume in not only fuel, but also on the inside merchandise sales, food service, and other convenience store items. Modern technology inside and outside of the store, especially with the outside for the fueling needs of our consumers. We're proposing eight gasoline fueling dispensers, which will provide 16 fueling positions, and then also three commercial fueling lanes that will cater to the commercial fueling customers, specifically diesel customers. And finally, we're proposing a 24-hour operation that'll have 25 parking spots and two ADA stalls. I want to speak why we chose Montgomery. We have the good fortune of having a capital budget in our company. In the Chicago market, it's been designated as one of the high-growth areas for our company. We want to be the convenience store of choice for Montgomery and surrounding communities. We feel we're going to fit a need for the community, and a lot of times when I present, a lot of objections come up, was we already have enough gas stations in our town, we don't need you, but we really do feel there's a need, and I'll get into that slide later. This site has very attractive demographics. There's actually about 54,000 residents within three miles of this site, and it has a strong retail, commercial, and residential backing. We specifically like it also. We're right adjacent to CAT, and a lot of, we think will fill a nice need for the employees that work in the industrial and commercial area adjacent to us. As I stated earlier, we believe Montgomery's an underserved market for high-quality retail fuel and convenience store customers. We believe there's an estimated demand of about 60 million gallons of gasoline within five miles of this site, and we want to help meet that demand. Why Speedway? Briefly, we've grown into one of the nation's largest convenience store operators. We're company-owned. Our parent company is Marathon Petroleum, a nice Midwestern company based out of Finley, Ohio. So with that comes very sound business practices and very high standards for the convenience store industry. We take great pride in our operations. All of our employees work for us, and they're trained within the organization, and we have very high standards. We do many internal mystery shops and food quality inspections at our stores to make sure we're meeting very high standards. We're going to provide a strong employment base for the community, wide range of jobs within the organization, and many of our employees that start off as part-time cashiers work their way up through the organization, and we offer many promotional opportunities for them. We also continually reinvest capital into our facilities and the markets that we serve, and this is important, too, because there's a lot of players within the industry that I think give the term "gas station" a bad name. We're proud of our facilities, and we continually reinvest to make sure they're always state-of-the-art and proud to be within your community. And then finally, we're a responsible retailer of age-restricted products. If we have the good fortune to sell alcohol and tobacco within the community, we'll be the best at it. We train our employees twice a year on responsible sale of alcohol and tobacco. Speedway, at a glance, we're the third-largest company owned and operated convenience store chain within the U.S. October 1st, in that range, we're purchasing Hess, which is an East Coast company, and we're going to almost double our size, and at that time, we'll be the number-one convenience store chain within the U.S. And that is not by store count, but by revenue. As I mentioned previously, we're a wholly-owned subsidiary of Marathon Petroleum Company and largest in the Midwest. If we were on the Fortune 500, we'd rank 153 currently today on the Fortune 500. We currently have about 1,500 stores in operation, and in a few weeks, that'll be close to 3,000. And our corporate office is located between Dayton and Columbus, Ohio, in a small town called Enin, Ohio. I've been with Speedway about 18 years, primarily as a district manager in the Chicago Land Market, and the thing I'm most proud about our company is our connection to the local communities. And just to speak briefly on that, we encourage volunteerism within the communities that we operate. And our largest cause within our company is Children's Miracle Network, and our division in Chicago, it spans from Milwaukee down to northwest Indiana. We're really proud, and we're really connected to this cause. We've raised about $1.3 million over the past two years, and that goes locally here to the hospitals within the markets that we serve. We're really proud of our commitment to the new hospital in Chicago, the Anne and Robert H. Lorrie Hospital, and in our honor, and we're very honored by this, that they named a family lounge and kitchen in our name, and it's called the Speedway Kitchen. Now, the economic benefit to Montgomery, we're going to invest about $5 million into the site. We plan on getting local tradespeople to work. Once completed, we anticipate employing about 15 to 20 employees. The average rate when you include benefits is about $16 per hour. We think we'll generate about $140,000 annually for Montgomery in sales tax revenue. We think that Montgomery might be losing tax revenue to your neighboring communities such as Oswego and Aurora, so I think this very nice state-of-the-art convenience store will help you capture more sales revenue for Montgomery. Now, I'm going to turn it over to Robert Madco with CISO, who will get into the overview of the site and more specific engineering and layout concepts. Thank you.
Thank you, Rich. Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. My name is Robert Madco. I work for CESO, as Rich indicated. I'm out of the Lansing, Michigan office, 8164 Executive Court. Appreciate the opportunity to present the civil portion of the project this evening. I'll walk us through the slides, and then, once I'm complete, there'll be an opportunity for any questions or comments that you may have. This slide shows the site aerial. The site is located in the southeast corner of Caterpillar and Orchard Road. And this drive right here, this is the existing Walmart development. This drive here actually is Galena Drive, which ties into the existing signal at the Walmart driveway on Caterpillar. You can also see here, this Galena Drive actually stubs just short of Orchard Road. This slide just shows us the survey, the topographical survey of the site. Note, the designation north is actually downward on this slide. You can kind of just get a feel for what's out there now, the lane widths, also, again, the kind of the triangular shape of the site. The site aerial, this actually shows just kind of an overview of what, if you're looking down at the site, what it would somewhat look like, kind of a rendering of the site after completion. You can kind of see the layout of where the building would be, the auto fueling canopy. These are actually the CFL lanes where the trucks would fuel. You can see here, the proposed access to Orchard is a right-in, right-out on Galena, which, again, is a public right-of-way. This connection down to Caterpillar right here, we're proposing to widen that connection, basically mirroring the north leg of the intersection. That would create an outbound left and a through-right lane. You can see here, this access point off of Orchard would be for truck traffic and would be inbound with the outbound-only coming out onto Galena. We had submitted plans to the township a while ago, and we received some comments. This slide just kind of goes over some of those comments and how they were addressed. Basically, there was a request for a pedestrian connection, and you can see in yellow here, that connection was added to our site plan. These plans and comments have been addressed and have recently been submitted to the township for approval. In addition, there was a comment to actually loop the water main in this portion of the site. That addition was also made. We also added some infiltration wells. You can see the red dots here. And also, there is a requirement that the UST be situated 200 feet from the adjacent property, and we do more than satisfactorily meet that requirement. In addition, we have, per the Illinois EPA, a requirement of 200 feet for the wells as Landscape plan was prepared for this site. It is heavily landscaped, and I think it's a very good plan. The species, which will be in the next slide, are native to the surrounding area. And again, you can kind of see there will be trees that surround the perimeter of the site. We also have a lot of shrubs and different bushes and shrubs throughout the internal portion of the site. This is just some of the plant images that will be included on the site. There are numerous evergreen trees and also several canopy trees throughout the site. We're using a variety of shrubs as well throughout the internal portions of the site. The site also is showing two infiltration basins, which will create a nice open space feeling as well, and just add to, to give a more open space feel to the project. The building canopy, building and canopy elevations, you each have this in your packet. And again, this just shows the front elevation, the rear elevation, left elevation, and of course, the right elevation. And we'll get to the slide here that shows, I think there was a comment in the last meeting on what some of the signage on the canopy would look like, so we have a picture here on the next slide that shows what that would look like. Actually, this is where the signs are located. You can see, again, as indicated earlier, there are essentially three frontages to this site, so we do have some 50-square-foot monument signs that are shown in the corners, as well as some canopy signs. Requested variances, and that was also discussed earlier. These variances did go through the ZBA and were approved on September 11th, and again, I won't get too much into it except to indicate that the monument sign was requested as a small square footage increase. And again, the canopy sign, actually, there was a canopy sign on the end of one of the canopies to show the Speedway logo. And as indicated, this is what we're talking about right here. This, again, just shows a more detailed signage plan. Again, this is in your packet. It just shows the square footages over here of the signs that are requested. Other than the monument sign, everything fell within conformity of the township standards. That's a brief presentation. We're both, Rich and I, here to answer any questions you may have, and thank you for your time.
I think we have the Shearing representatives here today that we're going to address the board as well.
Good evening, Mr. President and members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to take a couple minutes here. My name is Chris Shearing. I am the owner, along with my brother Paul and my sister Rachel, of the family farm to the south of the subject parcel. We were small children for years together on that farm and were lost in the cornfields once or twice, much to the consternation of my mother. That farm has been in the family since 1906. In 2002, the village of Montgomery approached us for annexation as the Oswego and Montgomery borders were being drawn. As part of that, we entered into a master development agreement with some of the surrounding parcels. We dedicated two and a half acres for that fire station that currently exists on the extension of Galena Road. We extended water and sewer, and we are certainly hopeful that this Speedway project is a great development opportunity for the village of Montgomery and contributes to a seamless pattern of current and future development for all of the larger parcels to the south, which have probably tremendous development opportunity if we do things right as time goes on. I haven't personally had much time to react to this project or to the plans. It's a special use permit application, and you, of course, are entitled to apply conditions to that to enable the development to go forward. We would most certainly like you to please consider some of our follow-on access concerns for future development of those larger parcels to the south. for future development of those larger parcels to the south. As your development director indicated, the parcel, the subject parcel for this project today is a bit of an odd duck, and I think it's particularly important that we make sure that the conditions are absolutely just right on this project, so this project can be of great benefit to the village and so can the follow-on development as it may occur. So, anyway, for a little bit more detail, I'd like to introduce to you Bruce Goldsmith, who speaks on behalf of my family, and thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight.
Good evening. I'm Bruce Goldsmith with the Dykema Law Firm, four-two-hundred Commerce Court in Lyle. I was actually involved in negotiations of the annexation agreement back in two thousand and two, and as part of that, the village prepared a concept plan. It's totally conceptual, but it highlights what we were trying to accomplish in terms of development. And I guess I got to give you a little bigger picture. So, the Shearing property basically surrounds the triangular piece that Speedway is developing, but also comes down and comes around. And when the village adopted the annexation agreement, they gave us seventy acres of B-2 zoning, commercial zoning, with very favorable provisions for the north part of the property, which is north of what is now the real Galena Road, and this is kind of Old Cannonball we're talking about here. And then, a hundred and forty acres of I-2 industrial to the south, with the notion that with the sidetrack that serves Caterpillar, that we would have access to sidetrack if we had a rail-served use, and that realistically, there's only so much commercial potential in any one site. So the top seventy acres is zoned for B-2, the bottom hundred and forty are zoned for I-2. So in bringing in the road, the Galena Road for the fire station, that would be the main access to the industrial part of the site. But it was very important that we preserve access from the north so that the property would be attractive to commercial development, and it was also important that we preserve access from Orchard Road. So, in the original design of the concept plan, it showed actually two roads coming into the site from Caterpillar, one at the far east, one down the middle. It showed full access to Orchard toward the middle of the site, and then full access, which would be signalized at Galena. So, the Galena access in the annexation agreement would be a full access that would serve the Conti property, which is in front of the Shearing property there, and then there would be full access at the north at Caterpillar. And given the changes in circumstance with the increased traffic on Orchard Road, it's anticipated that we would have a right-in, right-out on Orchard. So when this came forward, we contacted the village to make sure that the larger development considerations were taken effect. And so we have really three major considerations. I don't know if you can put up their site, your aerial? Thank you. So the first consideration is, the main access to the property from the north will be this road, but it will eventually come straight into the property. So the concerns were, one, that the village preserves our ability to make it straight into the site, and we had a condition that was put on by the plan commission. We've talked to staff about this, and my understanding is that Speedway would only be curbing up to about here, and therefore, the ability to go straight south in the future would be preserved. The second concern we had is that it's not likely that Old Cannonball will eventually serve our property, the Shearing property, in its current location, because you wouldn't bring a road in at this angle into a road that's coming straight down into the property. So we wanted some flexibility preserved so that eventually, it's likely that you would tee in here and not come in at an angle, as it's shown today. The third thing is that if that right-in, right-out was the only permitted right-in, right-out on Orchard between Caterpillar and Galena, that would compromise the development of the Shearing property. The village was kind enough to work with the county and got a letter from the county, which indicates an additional right-in, right-out would be permitted. We've asked for a little clarification on that, and we understand that, we hope to get the county to clarify that point. It's just a question of use of some language. So that would take care of the access points. So what we're really looking to see is that conditions in the approval of the special use will preserve our ability to come straight down into the site, will somehow address the future alignment of Old Cannonball, because it's only really there to serve this one house. And obviously, given the shape of the property, it's going to serve the Speedway. Long-term, the house probably eventually will be redeveloped. Third is giving us access on Orchard Road, and I think that pretty much expresses our concerns, and we've been very happy with the dialogue with staff and hope that those conditions would be imposed on the ordinance. And we've actually talked to your outside counsel and discussed these issues, and we're waiting to see a redraft of the ordinance next week that would include the conditions that we're talking about. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board, either for the petitioner or for Mr. Goldsmith or staff?
Convenience store? Are they getting a liquor license here?
They intend to apply for a liquor license at a later date, but as of right now, they have not applied for a liquor license.
I have a clarification question. He mentioned that the wide commercial lane canopy was going to be an exit only? Said outbound only, coming out?
At Caterpillar Drive?
Well, he indicated, like, on Cannonball, the Old Cannonball Road, Galena there?
It's a right-in, right-out only onto Orchard?
No, the back of the property. He pointed to that and said that it was going to be for outbound traffic only.
It's a truck route so that they can?
In and out.
Well, no, they would come in off of Caterpillar and exit to the south and then come back around to the intersection with Walmart.
So they're going to be able to turn left off of Caterpillar into that, that close to Orchard Road?
No.
No, they?
There's going to be a barrier there.
That's...
That's correct.
So the only way to get into the gas station with a semi is going to be off of Orchard Road?
Correct.
Okay.
I have a, can we ask questions of staff now?
Certainly.
Of the three issues that were brought up, can we go to the other side aerial picture, The roadway that is directly to the south of where the entrance is to the Walmart property, as I understand and the way it's been explained to me, that that road will continue to eventually go south, correct?
It's possible that with future development plans, that that would go directly south, and that's what's indicated in the annexation agreement. This would allow for that to take place, even though this development?
This would or would not?
Would.
Okay.
Would allow it to take place.
So that's the first issue, okay. Is Speedway okay with that?
My understanding, you would extend this south. I wouldn't see that we would have any problem with that.
Okay. Then, item number three, the right-in, right-out. We have a right-in, right-out right now that's proposed for the Speedway. I've seen the letter, I think everyone's seen the letter from the county level, showing that it shouldn't be an issue to get another right-in, right-out.
Correct.
Does that, and I guess, does that solve issue number three?
We believe that it solves issue number three for all parties concerned, yes.
Issue number two, they want to realign, what is it, Cannonball right now? They want to realign Cannonball eventually to, as development occurs, correct?
Access to Cannonball.
Speedway does not want to realign Cannonball now. What we anticipate is that when there is a development proposal for the property to the south, then that potentially could be redesigned.
But if that's the shape of their property, they've got to have access to their property.
It's hard to predict exactly what type of layout would be on a future plan for undeveloped property at this time, so we're going to have to evaluate that as it comes forward.
So really, the only issue that we have now between the two groups is issue number two, the realignment of Cannonball should, or when development occurs to the south of the Speedway property. Is that accurate?
I think that's accurate, yes.
But that's currently public right-of-way that we own, correct? And both parcels' property owners by rights have access or would have access to that or some form of that. And so if this were to get redeveloped in the future, that would be when we got a future development application.
We'd have to review it at that time.
What are Speedway's issues with item number two?
You want to speak to that? I think the issue and what we're looking at is, you know, we have a right-in, right-out here, and that's how passenger cars would get basically into the site from Orchard. If this were done away with or something happened to, we call it Galena Road now, you know, that would be an issue, and I understand it is public right-of-way. I don't think there's any issue, and everyone knows from Speedway's end that this would tee in, if this road should extend to the south, that this would tee in and create a stop sign intersection. I think that's understood. But the issue at hand is to make sure that this portion, you know, does remain, because that creates a vital access point to the site, not only for passenger cars, but for the semi trucks that would enter this access point and exit here to access the traffic signal, which is a key component of the site.
If I could, it really depends on what happens with plans for the future to the south and the house itself. It's possible that Speedway could still have their two access points, one by way of the eastern edge and the extension of the drive from Walmart, and then the right-in, right-out only at Orchard on up to the driveway to the east, and then the middle portion might be able to be abandoned at a future date. But it's hard to predict at this point in time without a plan to the south.
Why would you do that, though?
This right-in, right-out is designed so trucks would not enter here. The truck traffic would come down and enter this access point here, and again, exit here to the traffic signal.
And not out to the right?
I'm sorry?
The trucks couldn't, it's deterred from turning right and going back around?
Well, no, because this, again, this access point is, or this radius is not made for semi trailer traffic. That's a good question, thank you.
Is Speedway putting anything, the two points where the two roads might go, like sewer pipes or electrical or something that would deter making the road to go farther later on?
For this?
Probably back to the?
Kerbin gutter, we're actually redoing this roadway here. Kerbin gutter is essentially stopping here?
All right.
In this area, and then it's just edge of pavement through this area, and that is based on the township's engineering comments. And I think that is to facilitate possible extension to the south at some point. It's kind of hard to predict how that's going to happen, but I know there are some agreements in place that state that to happen. And again, I think everyone understands that this would just tee in if that did happen.
Just there wouldn't be nothing to deter, you know?
No, there would not be any storm sewer or anything.
Mr. Shearing was very good to us. Dave, I was on the board, Pete was on the board when he came in, and if I'm not mistaken, Chris, your mother was a teacher down at Nicholson down here?
Grandmother.
Grandmother. And he really helped us with the, between us and Oswego, he kind of decided the boundary agreements when he decided to go with us, and we sure wouldn't want to mess up all that acreage that we did gain.
And I think a lot of the plan, even the water main loop down here, is all on the internal?
All on your internal, okay. That's what I wanted to make sure of, okay.
I just have one clarification question. If you're driving east, well, this is south is up. So if you're driving west on Caterpillar Drive, coming out of Cat, so from the left, you're driving west, you will not be able to turn into the gas station?
You would be able to turn here?
Right.
Onto Galena.
Not at the other entrance?
No, I mean, you could turn here, but you couldn't make a left in, so really, if you're coming from this direction, this would be the only direction to go, and you would come up here and turn into the fuel station.
Okay.
Thank you.
And there'll be those reflector, yeah.
Could we go back to the slide that showed the main canopy?
Slide here?
That's okay. Could we discuss for a moment the kind of lighting that's under the main canopy and whether it would be visible from the Orchard Road?
It's very low-intensity lighting to illuminate the red Speedway letters. I believe it is neon. Traditionally, these signs are neon-based behind, so very low intensity, very low energy, not throwing off a lot of light, just enough to illuminate the Speedway logo.
I think he may be referring to the lights underneath the canopy.
Oh, the lights underneath, I'm sorry. These are resussed LED lights. In the past, gas stations traditionally had large lights that probably came down, I don't know, six to eight inches, and when you drove by them, and you probably still see them today, a big orange glow. These are very different, keeping in mind, they're directional, they don't throw off, there's basically zero spillage over the property line, very directional, basically intended just to illuminate underneath the canopy for the safety of the customers.
So the likelihood of glare from Orchard Road is pretty minimal?
Yes.
Okay, very good. I'm glad to hear that.
You know what, Stan, also on that, the new Sam's gas station has LED lights in the canopy. I looked up at it the other day.
Same concept?
Yeah, so.
Good, good. I would make a comment that the design is very attractive and very modern, and it will be a good addition to that area.
Thank you.
Can you whip this one before with the sign? The one right before this one with the sign, that one. I was at the planning meeting, and I kind of have to agree with two of the trustees that went against it, because we've always had certain things as far as saying that we're going to stay at this size and everything, but then talking to the gentleman of your sign company, the one on top, which is not much difference, it's just enough to make it a special sign, but he would not, I think it was thirty-two inch would be the next size, which would take off the price, really. And like he said, they only have one or the other, so it's nothing that they could come within our criteria. So I can understand the two that voted against it, because they're right, it's, we change things around, but I think this is a special case where you guys only have one or two sizes, and this, for what you want, is common sense is what you want is like that, so I kind of agree with it, even though it is different in our sign variants.
Thank you. Yeah, we have three standard sizes. The next... Yeah, we have three standard sizes, the next size up, I can't remember the square footage exactly, you know, and we knew we needed a variance, but we wanted to get as close to the ordinance. I believe the ordinance is 48 square feet. We found that our standard is 48 square feet, basically, so we're within a couple of feet of that ordinance.
Right.
And traditionally in our business, a lot of times the signs are to, to, to advertise the Speedway brand, like I think it was mentioned Aldi, but the unique part about our business is that we're, everybody's price sensitive, and so when, when you're shopping at Speedway, really the store is, a big portion of the store is outside, and everybody's price sensitive, it might be a penny or two pennies that makes that decision to take a right into our property, and we find the signage element, the ability to advertise the price is a, a big key to our business.
Any other questions of the petitioner or staff or the Shearing folks this evening?
I just have a couple of comments. I also was able to attend the Plan Commission meeting, and I really think our Plan Commission did a really good job. They listened to both sides, they took into account the concerns of the Shearing family. They spent a lot of time on this, on both issues, they asked a lot of questions. It may have seemed like maybe you got beat up a little bit, but they really took their time and they did a fantastic job, and I do see one of our commissioners here tonight, and I hope you'll share that with the rest. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, sir. The, like I said earlier, both of these ordinances, D and F, are first reading, so we will look to approve those or take action on those, rather, at our next meeting. Depending on how the ZBA case goes, how the board feels on that, this would be the second type of variance that we've approved for monument signs, and I am in favor of that, but I would also, if we pass that next week, or if you guys feel inclined now, refer that, refer that section of our code back to Plan Commission as a separate matter, because now we've approved two variances for signs in that area, so thus it's not really unique. I think it's just that we're changing our feeling on these signs in this area, and I know that we have another one that would like a similar sign variance or to change this. So if you guys feel inclined that we could send that to Plan Commission, have them review the ordinance and the standards like this. If you have a big corporate company come in and they can't quite meet our sign standards, the second time we've done this, so think about that, we'll talk about it in two weeks. Yeah. So the only two items that we will take action on tonight are C and E, so if there are no other comments, item C, which is a recommendation of Plan Commission, PZ 2014-008, the special use, if there are no comments, entertain a motion for approval.
Second.
Moved in second, call the roll, please.
Trusty Heinz.
Yay.
Trusty Youngerman.
Yay.
Trusty Marasek.
Yes.
Trusty Bun.
Yes.
Trusty Spurling.
Yes.
Trusty Lee.
Yes.
That carries 6-0. And then item E was a first reading, or item D is first reading. Item E, recommendation to zoning board of appeals on ZBA 2014-009, that's the variance. Undertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, call the roll, please.
Trusty Heinz.
Yay.
Trusty Youngerman.
Yay.
Trusty Marasek.
Yes.
Trusty Bun.
Yes.
Trusty Spurling.
Yes.
Trusty Lee.
Yes.
And that carries unanimously. You will see item D and F on the items for separate action at the next meeting, and thank everybody for attending tonight and the presentations. Moving on, item G this evening, professional service agreement with EEI for water treatment system upgrade in the amount of $30,000. With that, I'll ask Director Poobens for a summary on this item.
Thank you, President Brawley. In your pack tonight is the recommendation to approve a professional services agreement with Engineering Enterprise for $30,000. As you can read on the cover sheet, this is for system upgrades to our water treatment plant on Nell Road and to the Well 8 Water Treatment Plant. The upgrades can, are going to be used to convert our facilities from gas chlorine, which we now get in 150 pound cylinders, to liquid chlorine, which as you can imagine comes in a, a liquid form. The main reason for the upgrade there is safety. There's certain safety hazards associated with gas chlorine. Our staff is well trained in safety precautions and follows them. We've had zero accidents with gas chlorine, but in my opinion, this is an easy upgrade to make, and with the greater amount of water that we've been treating each year, we've started to use more and more gas chlorine. When I started with the village, we were able to get 2,000 pound cylinders, one ton cylinders. Those were banned a few years later by EPA. I don't think there's any move to ban 150 pound cylinders, but again, we feel it's just a, a good step forward on the safety front. Delivery is easier, disposal is easier, it's a safer product, it's basically like a liquid bleach. It has the same effectiveness as gas chlorine, it has to be pumped at different rates, but again, we feel this is a good safety improvement. The remainder of the work will be the installation of chlorine and ammonia monitoring equipment. We do have traces of ammonia, background traces of ammonia in some of our raw water supplies. That's not dangerous, but it does require that we treat the water a little bit differently. And the challenge is that ammonia level can change from well to well, from period to period, so we can't just measure it once and say that's our set number, let's treat it to that level. So this will include the addition of sensors within both of the plants to measure the background ammonia, and then to measure the chlorine dosage to make sure that we're matching the calculated amount to treat that level of ammonia. So, the contract is for $30,000. The first part of that is for design services, that's a fixed fee at $15,000. The second half is for construction engineering services, that would include the bidding and contracting, and then overseeing the installation of the equipment. That is a hourly basis, but estimated at $15,000, so. With that, I'd open it up for questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
So we're all in at 30,000? That's, that's the work?
It could be more, depending on the, on the design engineering. If we had issues that prolonged the construction, we may have more hours that have to be put in for inspection, so we could go beyond 30, or 30,000. The first half of it's a fixed fee, they've agreed to do the design work. I'm sorry, maybe I said design work, I meant construction. If the construction engineering goes, takes more time than we thought, then we could see an overage.
That was the word that was missing, was the construction portion?
Construction, I think I said design. So again, the design fee is fixed to 15,000, the construction engineering can vary, but is estimated at 15,000. There's a breakdown in the very back of the packet, it's one of the attachments that shows the estimated level of effort needs to be put forth. You can see they break it down into design engineering, construction engineering, and then there's a few direct expenses. Pretty typical method for making this type of, paying for this type of project, for this type of work.
Okay.
We'd be constrained, I think, by any, you know, purchasing change order type requirements that we currently have. Administrators of all would have the ability to, to approve up to a certain amount, and anything above that, we would have to bring to the board. But again, I think it's unlikely in this one that we'll see major changes in the estimated work effort.
Then of course, the construction portion will come back to the board, correct?
The actual award of contract bill, that this is just for the engineering oversight services, let's call it that. So just like with any project, when we bring in a contractor to build it, we generally hire Engineering Enterprises to have their professional staff on site to make sure the work's being installed or built up to standard, that all the codes are being met, the payments are being made properly and promptly to provide communication with the contractor, et cetera.
Any other questions? Hearing none, entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Trusty Bun.
Yes.
Trusty Spurling.
Yes.
Trusty Lee.
Yes.
Trusty Heinz.
Yay.
Trusty Youngerman.
Yay.
Trusty Marasek.
Yes.
That carries 6-0, thank you. And we'll move right along to item H this evening, which is the award of a contract for H2O Towers LLC for power washing of the water storage tanks in the amount of $23,700. And I'll ask Director Poobens for a summary.
Thank you, President Brawley. Asking tonight for approval of an award to contract to H2O Towers LLC to basically power wash and clean the Fairfield Way Water Tower and the ground storage tank, which is located at the Public Works Facility at 891 Nell Road. These are maintenance items. We typically do them on a periodic basis to all our towers. If you look up at some of the towers, and for those of you that have been out west, if you look up on the underside of the towers especially, we get mildew growth because it's generally damp quite a bit of the time. So this is to come in with a slightly chlorinated solution and to spray down and clean the tower and the ground storage tank. It's fairly straightforward, it's a maintenance item, it's a budgeted item, it was approved in the budget, as part of our water improvement program for this fiscal year.
You may have said this, but this, is this all of our towers?
This is not. This would only be for one water tower and for the ground storage tank. We have three other, four other, no, three other, excuse me, three other water towers. The, what we call the West Tower, which is at the VVF plant, the East Tower, which is at Well 8 on Wobonsia Road, and then the Ogden Hill Tower, which is on the far east side at 34 and Hill Avenue.
Those are the three that we're not doing?
We're not doing those at this time, but...
We're doing the Fairfield, you might have said that, but I wasn't...
Fairfield and the ground storage tank.
Okay. Yeah, that Fairfield one's dirty. Okay, can you explain real quick the, do we give notifications to the area residents before we do something like this?
We will. Generally, our towers haven't been that close, the one on Wobonsia is, but that's our plan, to notify the residents next door, give them some idea of what the process involves, what materials we're using, any precautionary measures they need to take, which we are investigating. We don't feel there's any threat to health or home with the product we're using. These, the towers will not be covered, so there's no shrouding that's required on this contract. They'll have rigging that they'll use to go up and work from and spray down the outside of the towers, so.
How often do we do this?
There's no set date, we're trying to just incorporate them periodically, depending on the condition of the towers.
Why is, I mean, Pete's estimates are almost always around the button. These estimates are all over the wall. I mean, you think the two guys from Illinois not having to travel or anything would be within the ballpark, and yet, have you checked on each two towers? I mean, other, what other cities have they done this for?
H2O's not worked for the village. Engineering Enterprises has worked with them in other communities. I would let Pete say the communities he's told me, but I just don't want to misspeak. Our belief is H2O is a tower cleaning company, that's what they do. The other two companies are primarily painting companies, so they may have a different approach as to how they want to do the work, they may not be as familiar with it. Sometimes companies will bid projects that they may not necessarily feel they're going to get, so.
Feel like a third cheaper, but Pete, do you have?
Village of Schaumburg and St. Charles have used them to clear their tanks. And I think Mike's got it right, the, these folks are primarily concentrate on power washing and cleaning tanks, whereas the painting contractors do it, but they do it more as fill-in, and we have been informed that the painting contractors are quite busy, and so they're giving bids that if they get it, they know they're going to be paying overtime and having to, you know, engage additional crews. So, you know, we try to get as many people to bid on our projects as we can, but I guess I wasn't totally surprised that the, the tower people that specialize in it are a little more cost effective.
Fine, makes me happy, go ahead.
If you'll notice, the engineer's estimate is 33,000.
Right.
So, we're satisfied that the H2O bid was a realistic bid in that ballpark. The other two, as Pete discussed, not so much.
It's fine.
Any other questions?
This will be well received in the Fairfield Way, it's work that needs to be done.
Is there a motion?
Motion, approve.
Second. Call the roll, please.
Trusty Lee.
Yes.
Trusty Heinz.
Yay.
Trusty Youngerman.
Yay.
Trusty Marasek.
Yes.
Trusty Bun.
Yes.
Trusty Spurling.
Yes.
And that carries 6-0.
Thank you.
All right, we'll pick up item I, which is actually E from the consent agenda, which is Resolution 2014-016, approving and authorizing investment of funds through PMA Securities Inc. and PMA Financial Network Inc. And I'll turn it over to Danny.
I guess the, the thing that makes me the maddest is why this ended up on the consent agenda. It's a policy change, we usually talk about things, this, this thing came out of nowhere and popped up on the consent agenda. I, I wouldn't have any problem if it was on the regular agenda, but to put it on the consent, it was kind of like a slide through, and I didn't like that.
And it's not actually a policy change, but I'll let Director Van Voren discuss what he was trying to accomplish.
Excuse me. The village board approved the investment policy as a board policy in November of 2013. That policy included not only PMA Securities, PMA Financial Network, it also included Harris Bank. So in talking with PMA, we are looking to start doing some investments and certificates of deposit by U.S. Treasury, Treasury, U.S. Agency of Municipal Securities. PMA requires that this be in a resolution form that lists both PMA entities as well as Harris in a resolution itself. So they're already all, already all authorized financial institutions, it's just putting it in a different format, so. This was not trying to slide anything through, this is just...
Where is the money now?
The money now is in various banks around the community.
Okay, and, and why was this not like bid out then, instead of just given to these guys over here in Naperville?
When I bid out the securities, they will, there will be an email sent out to various institutions, and all of the entities will be able to bid on those monies, be it CDs, Treasury Agency, or Municipal Securities. So it, this is not listing these guys as the only people that can do this, this is just making sure that we can...
This isn't, yeah, this isn't giving them money, they, for us to be able to invest with them, they require the policy we did before, just in a different format. So when you guys did the investment policy before, you authorized us to use these groups. They wanted to see it in a different format, they wanted it in a resolution. I, you know, I don't know why they do that way, but, so it's not changing anything, it's just, before you authorized them to be one of the people we could possibly use, and this is just redoing that in a different format. So it doesn't guarantee the money's going to them, it just means it's somebody we could ask for bids for, along with other groups.
Okay, when it came out like that, it didn't look that way?
Right, I understand that.
Okay, and as long as, I, I think Justin told some other people that they would have a chance to bid on it, and when you seen this, it didn't look that way?
No, it's always our intent to get bids, because we want to get the best rate that we can for the village, so we don't want to...
Especially with the, as far as some of these bid, or bonds and whatever, I know this company's very big on, on school bonds, which is fine, but they're also big on, on towns, which is fine too, unless you get somebody like Detroit, and then it's not so good for the people that hold on to them.
We require a certain rating of bonds to be invested in, so, so like, some, we would not...
That's what we'd like to know, is a little more information, I guess, on, on, you know, when the bids are going to be sent out, rather than just something that comes into the consent agenda and doesn't, doesn't say anything, really, to me.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, I apologize for that, like I said, it was just a formatting change to something you'd already approved, so it wasn't authorizing anything new, so we figured we could just do it that way. We should have, you know, put something in the notes or somewhere to let you know that's what it was, so it was clear for you, which we'll do in the future. And when we get ready to, to bid out the money, we'll let you know.
Especially when I looked at the Harris, I know Harris on identity is still there, but they're now called BM, BMO, and you look at this and you go, this is an old writing, basically, so, okay.
And Justin, could you include a copy of that policy from November in our boxes, just as kind of... just as kind of an FYI for the board?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you.
To help me catch up a bit too, did I hear that there might be other brokers as well?
There are other brokers that we did list on the investment policy that was approved in November. I don't have all of them in front of me right now, but I will certainly get the policy that includes the list of authorized financial institutions to you.
My follow-on thought is, wouldn't it make sense to broaden this ordinance to encompass that group rather than just call out the one company, if that's our intent?
This particular company requires it in a particular format, so that's why we're doing it this way. There are other, Fifth Third is another one, another broker that we use. They simply require a resolution that lists the authorized signers, which we did back in, I think, September or October of last year. So each one requires something slightly different, and so we're trying to address those as they come up.
I think what we've seen tonight, though, is that the optics of just calling out the one company is creating some confusion.
Understood.
And if it's easily avoided, let's avoid it.
Okay. There are no other questions on this?
Why can't this be taken out for a bid?
It will be. When we go to invest, it will be put out for bid.
It is. It will. This doesn't guarantee that we'll give anything.
It's just allowing this to be one of the companies that can take bids.
And you said you're going to put this November 2013 in our.
Right. Justin will put it in everybody's box.
The investment policy. Was there a list of banks at that time?
There's an appendix to the, there's an appendix to the policy itself, and that appendix is included in that policy, so that at any point in time, if we want to add somebody, we can simply bring back that appendix instead of bringing back the entire policy.
That was part of the policy in November that you approved. It had a list there of the institutions. So, but we'll put it in, we'll put it in everybody's box, so you have it again, and you can review it.
Okay.
Then we shouldn't, you got this down to be of an approval. We shouldn't be approving anything right now until it's called out for bid then.
Well, we're not approving giving any money. We're just approving the resolution. The, this financial company wants this in a certain format to allow us to let them bid, and so we're just trying to do that. This is not giving anybody any money.
I'm just saying, according to the way I read it, approval and authorization investment of funds.
Right, we're authorizing that we could invest funds with them. It's not that we are, but it's that we could.
Maybe I'm reading it wrong, but that's the way I read it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think Pete, it merely authorizes them to receive funds. That is, that they would be an authorized investment once that decision is made. If I'm hearing Jeff correctly, that that would be bid at the time that the funds are actually going to be invested, but in order to do that, you have to have somebody that's authorized to receive them. If I also understand correctly, you have a policy that did approve a number of brokers or banks that could be authorized to receive them. That was done in November. This particular entity would like to see it in a resolution format to authorize them as an approved depository or investment banker for purposes of those funds, but the resolution that you have before you tonight does not give them any money. There's nothing being invested at this point.
Thank you, Pete.
Is there a time constraint on this at this time?
No, I was just going to suggest if the board would like, I could certainly bring that investment policy, put it in your boxes, or bring it back to the next meeting. There is not a rush on this, so.
All right. So please, as the board, we'll table this item tonight. We'll review that policy, and then we'll look to approve this at our next meeting.
When are you going to bid all this? If we're not in a hurry for this, are we, I know you said the money's in numerous banks, but in fact, I had a resident say, where's your money? And I said, I have no idea. It's up by our financial director.
I am looking to start bidding out funds in either October, November of 2014.
Okay, thank you.
Do we need a motion to table, or?
That's probably good.
I'll accept that as a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Third.
Call the roll on that.
Sure. Trustee Bun.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling. Motion to table.
Yes, thank you.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Heinz.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
And Trustee Marasek.
Yes. Thank you all. There are no items for discussion this evening, but I suppose that we do have items for discussion, or, I'm sorry, new or unfinished business to come before the board.
I have a couple items. I asked Jeff earlier today to kind of give the board an update as to where we stood with the Huntington Chase bond and how we were doing with that. Could you update us, please?
Actually, we were going to cover that in executive session.
Thank you. Also, after this week's solicitor issues, I would like to see the solicitor ordinance brought up at a future, a near-future meeting. I'd also like staff to see what the surrounding communities, what their ordinances are, to see if we can better word or better serve our residents with our ordinance.
We did gather some today that I emailed to staff and printed out copies for others who don't have email access, just as a beginning, just so you could see some. I also shared those with our attorneys, so they could look and compare. And I know they are still working on researching some of the issues, so I guess I would let Pete address where that stands.
Excuse me. Yeah, we have done some investigation with respect to some of the questions that got raised during the week. I think at the moment, it probably is premature to debate it at length tonight. We could, if you want, give you some preliminary. We have looked also at ordinances that Jeff got today for five surrounding communities. I can tell you that in substance, they are very similar to yours, very little difference. But certainly, if you have some specific goals in mind with respect to revising the ordinance, if you let us know, then we can certainly tell you where you may face issues with it and what kind of changes you can make. I can tell you as a preliminary matter that there is a lot of case law with respect to solicitor ordinances, not only in Illinois, but from around the country, because they generally face significant constitutional challenges, not only the First Amendment, free speech, but freedom of religion and freedom of association and all kinds of issues like that. So the courts generally don't favor them. They do recognize the municipality's ability to certainly regulate for the public safety and welfare of its citizens, and so when that is the object of the regulation, then they're upheld. But if it goes much beyond that, that's when you want to take a very close look at how that language is drafted and what kind of authority is given to either grant or deny permits or to restrict somebody's ability to communicate with their neighbors. So it would be good if we had specific areas, you know, that you wanted to address. We can certainly give you, you know, a memorandum concerning the legal issues and what your options are and what possible consequences are, and then it'll be, of course, your choice as to what you want to do.
Do you want those comments now or in a follow-up?
Whatever is your pleasure, if you want to.
You can, if you have anything in mind, you can provide it now, or you can put it in an email that the board will see, that the whole board.
Let me do both. In particular, the ordinances from Alney and Forest Park contained references that would seek to prohibit misrepresentation, and I think that's what the board is mindful of right now as well. We, I had always perceived the benefit of a solicitor's permit to be twofold. One, it identifies the entity for certain and gives the village the opportunity to connect with that company's owner, but it also, I thought, gave us some leeway to ensure that the practices and the representations of that company fall within the guidelines of useful transaction, not misleading people, not deceiving people, or not misrepresenting what they're trying to do. There was some specific language in one of those ordinances about shall not misrepresent its purpose or intent, so I would love to see something like that incorporated. And the other ordinance attempted to give the board some latitude in determining behavior that might not be in the public interest, and I think that's, in my mind, that's a legitimate domain of the board. I think the Board of Trustees should visualize the kind of community that we want Montgomery to be and the kind of sales practices that are acceptable or over the edge and call those out. And I think many of us would like to be able to do just that. When we see practices that are being complained about pretty vocally by our residents, that's a red flag. That means something's not right. The other provision I saw in subordinances, it's in ours, but it's not quite as strong, is a prohibition from approaching a house that's marked no solicitors.
That's by statute as well, state statute as well.
What is, are the residents to call the police when something like that happens? How do we educate our residents as to their role in enforcing our solicitors?
Typically, if somebody has gone to so far as to get the signage, they already know what that means. That means that if it is violated, yes, it's a call to the police.
Well, they're available at the hardware store for 50 cents. I did see two variations. One said, no soliciting unless you have a Montgomery solicitor's permit. I like that one. Those aren't at the hardware store, but we might find a way to help make them available. And that provided more specific protections than just no soliciting.
Pete, how big do those signs have to be? I mean, I know you can't have them so small I can't see it, but some people don't want a 12 by 24 on their front window either, but you, if you had a lot of small ones, I think we could pass them out and it'd work very nice. Does it say a certain size, or?
You know, I don't recall if the statute does. Jessica, do you remember if it's?
I don't see that.
Yeah.
Well, the next question I have is for the police then. If you receive a call for this, what's the course of action? What's the enforcement? Somebody's violating the solicitation. If I have a no solicitor sign on my door and someone violates it and I call the PD, what's going to happen?
We just, so you answer the door and you have a conversation with them?
Well, I have a sign up that says no solicitor, and they come to the door and knock anyways.
And then you call the police and they leave? Probably not much, but we'll have to discuss it with our attorney, because all this week, we've had several conversations on enforcement.
Well, I can tell you that this particular incident, I was unaware of this happening until Mr. Youngerman came to my door. Apparently, the guy came to my door, and the only way he left was when my wife threatened to let our 105-pound German shepherd out to take him down to the curb. Then he left. Prior to that, it was just push, 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 push. And then when we started talking about this, we're completely handcuffed. We have no recourse, unless we can put up a no soliciting sign and know that the PD is going to remove them.
There's a variety that, we don't have to get into great details, but there is a difference under the statute. If you have a sign for no soliciting, as opposed to someone who comes to your door and you ask them to leave your property and they refuse, then they become a trespasser, and that's a different issue again.
And that's, that was my question, because now you're into a whole criminal thing versus a civil matter here.
One would be an ordinance violation, the other one would be a criminal charge.
Does being home rule or non-home rule have anything to do? Do home rule municipalities, are they able to regulate solicitation a little more?
As a general rule, they might be able to have some different regulations that we wouldn't have as a non-home rule community, but both types, both home rule and non-home rule, have to adopt regulations that are consistent with the constitutional protections. And so a lot of times, you'll see in the case law, it doesn't make any difference. It's Chicago, or New York, or some large city that's clearly a home rule municipality, or in some states, they even have state statutes that govern it, but in all cases, they would be subordinate to the constitutional protections.
And I have no problem with the solicitor that's gotten a permit. I may or may not agree with what they're soliciting, but when they're being deliberately misleading or lying and not leaving when people are asking to leave, at some point, their First Amendment rights are trumped by the rights of the homeowner, because you're now on my property and I want you to leave.
Absolutely. And at that point, when you've asked them to leave and they refuse, the relationship is now changed. That's correct. They've committed, or may be committing a criminal act.
At which point, then we can go hands-on, correct?
Call the police.
The criminal violation, like you say, naturally Steve would probably do that, but what about the ordinance violation? When you said the other would be an ordinance violation with no solicitation and he knocked on the door.
Right.
Would the police be allowed to give him a ticket?
Sure.
For an ordinance then?
Sure.
Okay. And a three-by-five card would be perfect for no solicitation on their front.
I think it's probably two by six. I'm in sales, so I see those all the time on businesses, and, you know, you're respectful of them. You turn around and walk away. I turn around and walk away, go back to the parking lot, and I call the company and say, I saw your sign. I just wanted to drop this off. And then they come and invite you in because you're being respectful. But yeah, they're not very big at all.
No. I've seen some, but I don't know if there was regulations on them or not. Okay.
Another thought. Most contractual agreements are whatever the two parties agree to. What would prevent us from laying out a contract that's consistent with the wishes of the board, and either they sign it or they don't?
Who would sign it?
The proposed solicitor. We lay out, if you're going to solicit in Montgomery, you need to follow these standards, or you cannot.
Again, you could refer to the permit as a contract if you want. You may have requirements in your ordinance as to what they must meet in order to get a permit.
Yes.
And if they meet those requirements, then they're entitled to the permit. If what you want to put in this contract or in the ordinance in order to get a permit goes beyond what is constitutionally permissible, you're going to run into a problem with it.
There has to be some, I don't know how far we've drifted from the Constitution, but being honest with people that you're trying to sell something to ought to be part of that foundation.
I understand. We'll certainly look into that particular provision.
If you are doing an advertisement, or a radio spot, or a TV spot, the Federal Trade Commission expects you to be honest, and they'll hold your feet to that standard. But is the spoken word somehow different when you're selling something person to person?
In the, in a certain context, no, it's not. Where you run into the problem is, at what point does it become dishonest, misleading, as opposed to sales puffing, for example? At what point is where somebody says something that if you dissect the sentence and it's factually true, but in the context, overall context, it may be misleading? And those things become very difficult, especially in the free speech arena. So I guess what I'm indicating is that I certainly understand and know that you want to see to what extent the ordinance can prohibit misrepresentation, and certainly a flat-out misrepresentation of an actual fact would be one thing, as opposed to, you know, sales puffing or statements that are made to induce you to enter into disagreement.
Two things that I'll add on that, that, and then if we have others, we can add them, otherwise we'll move on tonight. It would also be helpful, I think, for the board to list if we had no ordinance, how would soliciting be regulated? I guess what, under what powers of the Illinois Constitution are we able to do this? And if we didn't have any, the question I emailed you today was, in light of the situation, could we suspend the issuance of solicitor permits in the meanwhile? And I say that because all of the conversations that we're having tonight assume that our ordinance isn't written far enough. It doesn't go far enough, but it might be as far as it can legally go. And what my theory is, is that, and I know you guys all came to hear that, that the, when somebody's. that the, when somebody comes to get a permit from us, we check and make sure they're not a felon and, you know, X, Y, and Z. And that might be as far as we can go with this. And if we didn't have an ordinance, then people and felons could come and solicit in our community. So I think that would be helpful to start from zero, and those are my two points. The one is that I asked if we could suspend it in the meanwhile, and not without, we couldn't do it without a resolution and ordinance from the board?
In effect, I mean, you have an ordinance on the books that has certain requirements, and if somebody meets those requirements, they're entitled to a permit. To in effect suspend that means you're gonna repeal the ordinance, even if it's on a temporary basis until you can adopt a new one, and then you would function with no regulation.
How many permits are we talking about in a year's time?
I'll have to look. I am not sure, but I can get that information for you.
I'm inclined to favor the notion of suspending them until we've got it right.
Well, that would mean repealing your ordinance.
That's exactly right.
But then, anybody can come.
We would ban soliciting until we've got a permit.
It's against state statute. You can't ban it.
They would still be able to solicit, but that means the people that were weeding out from background checks would also be able to solicit.
Now, that's a bad idea then. Okay.
It's a good thought. I know what you meant.
I think we went through this with the ordinances when we did pass it, if this is in the last 10 years. It all goes back to the enforcement, and like I say, when the ordinance violation and the police gives the guy a ticket because the door said no solicitation is not the same as, as you say, a criminal where the guy steals your dog or something like that when he's there.
Correct.
Which we haven't had happen, to my knowledge, with the dog incident. I don't think we've had that.
I've got one.
Just want to say that.
I have two questions, and to me, they're very basic questions. The first one, what happens when someone comes up to my door and they don't have any type of permit? Can they be ticketed?
Yes.
Can they be arrested?
I've done that, and I've called the police, and they've grabbed the guy, and he leaves the area. Is that correct?
That's correct, but no, he won't be arrested physically, no.
Okay, as long as...
But he'll be cited.
Compliance.
If these people are ticketed, can we have a stepped fining? If they're, you know, they go to one door and they're on a Friday, and they're ticketed, they don't have a solicitor's permit, but yet they're out again on Saturday, is that now a stepped fine? What are we doing, or is it a $25 ticket each time? Can we step that fine up?
No, they'd be considered two separate incidents.
And then, the people that drive around to throw the little rocks on my driveway?
Rock advertising?
Yes.
No.
Are you collecting them right?
Stan and I can, I know I consider that litter. They're throwing litter on my driveway, and I'm tempted to throw the rocks back at them. But... Is that considered soliciting? Is, or is that considered littering?
Actually, new to me, so I'm not...
Yeah, no, absolutely. I'll handle that question. We've had discussion with Trustee Bond. We're, we had one this morning, and we now have a PO box in Aurora that it comes back to the vehicle. And once we get that information from the post office, then we're gonna pursue the owner of the vehicle for littering, because that's exactly what he does. It's a form of soliciting, advertising, but technically, it's littering when you throw something out the window of a car into the parkway.
Is it one case of littering, or if they go around my development, is it 120 cases of littering?
Well, it's 120, but if we brought 120 cases to court in Aurora, the judge would probably...
Would give us $6,000.
No, but he'd ask, he or she would ask to speak to me in chambers and tell me to knock that off.
Tell them we'll just lock the guy up then. He's littering in my neighborhood.
Unfortunately, does not...
I see, I consider them free rocks for my landscaping, so.
Littering's not a jailable offense, but I understand.
Throw them right back.
Piece of advertisement from their company? Actually, use the Seal Co. company. Feel bad saying that.
Those were my issues.
Is there any other comments on this? If you have more, please funnel those through Jeff, and then get those questions to the whole board too, on a weekly basis?
And then...
If you can get them to us, then we'll certainly...
Right, we'll get them to you, and the attorneys will continue to research this, and you'll be hearing more about it in the future.
And this, yeah, this will be at a future board meeting. It may not be at the meeting in two weeks. Depends on the time.
I just want to say I wore my blue shirt for Detroit, because they did beat the Packers. But if we can get home early, we can watch the other half of the Bears game tonight.
Sounds good. Future meetings, you can see them there, Plan Commission, on its new Thursday. Sounds like a TV show, October 2nd. And then we have Village Board meeting of October 13th, and it seems like we will likely have the committee of the whole meeting on October 21st. With that, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session for three purposes this evening. Employment of employee, collective negotiating matters, and pending litigation.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Your second. Trustee Youngerman?
Yay.
Trustee Marasek?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Heinz?
Thank you.